So this is a meeting of the Instruction Work Group. And I am subbing in until the work group chairs are appointed, which will be July or August. So we have a fairly light agenda this evening. And first is public appearances. And we do have one public appearance. And so it is Daniel Yancy. And Daniel, do you want to? You can sit right down at the end there. You have, you have three minutes, but since we're a little light, I wouldn't. You'll hear a beep going off. And is the green light on the microphone in front of you? Yeah, can you pull the, it down towards you a little bit? Okay, and whenever you want to get started.
Okay, my name is Daniel Yancy. I attended LaFala High School. I graduated in 2013. The impact the Avid Tops program had on me or in my high school career, I would just say it's very, it was very helpful for me. I got ahead in a lot of classes. I was much more ahead of any other, of my peers, my friends, with the resources they had given me, which was, you know, note taking. And like parchment was a huge thing for me. That kind of stuck with me all throughout college of getting transcripts sent or where to pull high school transcripts because you don't want to call your high school back and have to go through that whole thing and then pull transcripts. So having my name in that system already really, really helped me out. Helped me with college readiness, the college tours. And sometimes we were even waived for, I think there was two waivers for college applications, which are like fifty to a hundred bucks depending on where you apply. And in my situation, that was a huge thing for me because I didn't come from a lot of money. How did Avid Tops make me feel? It made me feel just college ready. I wasn't nervous to go to college. I knew there's going to be a slight transition due to like course load, but I think I was pretty ready depending on, given my resources and what I had known and what I had learned throughout Avid Tops when I was in high school. Leadership, I feel I'm a natural born leader. I don't like to sit in the back. I'm not a wallflower. So it was much easier to take those kind of stands when I was in high school. Note taking collaboration. In college, I use that a lot because a lot of people don't, a lot of people haven't experienced what Avid Tops have or has brought to the table for me. So I was able to organize notes and/or organize the group and like, hey, we need this, this, and this, and have those critical thinking questions already thought out rather than having them already kind of, having them come up later. I was able to bring those to the front and like, okay, this is, these are our questions. How are we going to answer those? And that was all throughout Avid Tops that helped me do that. Senior year of college, or not college, senior year of high school, the most impactful thing for me was the college readiness coaches. They have helped me with a lot, staying in contact with me throughout college. And I still talk to them as well. They ask me how I'm doing or is there anything? They just had resources that I didn't necessarily know how to reach out to or I didn't know of at all. So they were able, they were there for me on that level as well. Freshman year of college was pretty bad for me. My mom, my mom lost my job, I lost her job. My laptop broke. I got in a car accident. So it was just, it was all really bad. But Avid Tops was there again, and the Boys and Girls Club were there to offer their support. And I'm getting a new laptop. And they were handing me out tutors and everything to catch back up. And the class couldn't stop because I was going through these, but they did help me with that. Another thing Avid Tops has offered to me was the early registration period that are given through when I was at M A T C. And at Edgewood, actually. It's just registering for all these things because it's a, it's a dog and cat fight for those classes, you know? And you want to get, you want to get your seat. You want to get in those classes rather than taking it at a different time. So that early registration period was like a week or two before all the other colleges were able to do that. So that was huge for me because I was trying to get in and out of class, you know? And I work full time too. So I was trying to work around my work schedule rather than like having to take just two classes when I could take a full workload or class load. It allowed me a lot of career exploitation. I was pretty set on being a business, a marketing major and computer science major too, actually, before I started school. But then I took two years off, went to the Marine Corps. And when I came back, I'm in the Marine Corps Reserves now. And when I came back, I switched my major to nursing because I was just not really interested in business anymore because my, I was going to Edgewood at the time and it was just, they were revising the business school. So I feel like it wasn't for me. So when I came back, I was doing nursing for a while at M A T C. But then I kind of just like fell in love with business again. So I'm back to business. Long story short, I'm back to business. I did two years at M A T C, or two years at Edgewood. I did like a semester and a half at M A T C. I've taken a class in conjunction or congruently with M A T C. I learned that classes of five hundred aren't my style. And I'm now at Hurizing Online, full, full time online. Doesn't interrupt my work schedule or anything like that. I still work two jobs and I go to drill every month on the weekends. So that has been amazing for me. And I've got those resources through some of my college success coaches. The importance of this program, I think, to our high school students is, you know, a lot of people are going to complain about the binder and the notes and everything, but it honestly does help you, or it helped me at least, going through college and high school, especially through my route. It hasn't been the straightest path, but I still, they may not be the, you know, the line on the side of the paper anymore, but I still ask myself those critical questions and how to come back to the beginning and relate everything that I can. So I, so it's clear for myself. And so I can understand my notes and working in those groups, I can, they can understand my notes as well, putting it into my own words. That way it's not, you know, black and, not black and white on the, through like text, but from another student, coming from another student in my words. So planners, I don't really use planners too much. It's my phone. But I usually, I use my phone. And it alerts me when I need to get stuff done. And yeah, that's, Avid Tops has done a lot for me. And being partnered with the Boys and Girls Club has been probably the best experience too, because I came up through the Boys and Girls Club. And to, I've worked there and to come back as a student, it was just a lot of love and a lot of openness there that they offered to not only me, but my friends and peers as well.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so that's the last of our public appearances. Daniel, you can, yeah, we don't, you're done. So next on the agenda is approval of the minutes. So I will move that the minutes from the Instruction Work Group dated January seventh, two thousand and nineteen are approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is a proposed action item for the May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen regular board meeting. So this is the partnership renewal for Avid and Teens of Promise. Jen and Sarah.
Oh, I'm not going to kick things off this time. We're just going to dive right in. Cindy and Langston, if you could join us. And Alex, you're, that's right, you're coming up too, from Boys and Girls Club. Thanks for joining us, Alex. Good evening.
Good evening.
Wonderful to see some new faces around the table.
Cindy, would you mind doing full of our introductions?
Absolutely.
Especially given the new board members.
Thank you. So I'm Cindy Green. I'm the Executive Director of our Secondary Programs and Pathways. Excited to be here to talk to you about Avid Tops. Langston Evans, who is our District Avid Coordinator. Alex Gagnon, who is one of our partners over at the Boys and Girls Club that we work very closely with for Avid Tops. And Glenna, that works on the, the college success side also. And so tonight, we are going to be talking to you about not just the renewal of our M O A, but also about some of the results from our three-year evaluation. And we thought it was important, we don't do this work alone. We truly do this work with our partnership with Boys and Girls Club. So we thought it was really important to have everyone up here at the table to engage and also answer any questions that you may have. So I'm going to turn it over to Langston in a minute. But before I do, I just wanted to kind of remind us why we're at the table and where we've been. So as a reminder, for high intensity partnerships, we have a three-year M O A that we are just completing. Through that M O A process, we engage in an external evaluation at the end of three years to see how we've progressed, to see the impact that the partnership has had. And now we are at a place where we just rounded out our first formalized high intensity partnership. You should have received a copy of the evaluation that we just had for that. And then we use that evaluation, as well as what we've learned for the last three years, to really think about the changes that we are proposing for a new M O A as we move forward for another three years. So we'll spend time talking about that and we'll also talk a little bit about the results. Jen, anything else you want to add before we move on? Okay, great. So I'm going to turn it over to Langston.
All right, so this is the sort of the beginning part. Am I on now? Okay, I'm on. So Avid and Tops. Avid stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination, a proven almost forty-year-old, forty-year college readiness system that closes gaps and gives opportunity for first-generation students, students whose families come with limited economic resources, and students of color. Teens of Promise is the Boys and Girls Club aspect. And together, we became Avid Tops in two thousand and eight. And so when we think about what does Avid Tops do? It is an equity strategy. It has multiple facets, but it's a targeted strategy to close opportunity and experiential gaps for our students who may be the first in their families to attend college, low income, or students of color. And there's several different facets. I'll point out three. One is the Avid elective class. The Avid elective class, which Daniel spoke about very eloquently, is a class which students, for, targeted for students in the middle. So we're looking for students in the academic middle who have college potential but need support. These are the students that currently might not be making it to college, even though we know they have the greatness and the potential within them. The elective class provides them with supports, connects them with resources, connects them with the partnership, which takes them outside the classroom, into our community, and into opportunities that not only set them up to be successful into getting into college, but be successful in college. And the elective class is that component. Students can begin in the seventh grade. They apply. It's a competitive process. Students have to show that they are willing to work to go to college. We know that there's opportunities for students that are at the high end of our spectrum. And there's supports for students that might be below average. But we know that the elective class fits that, meets that need for the student who's in the middle. Another component or facet of the Avid Tops partnership is professional development. Together, we were able to offer all secondary staff opportunities to grow and learn in serving the students that we serve in the Avid elective. That serve the students who are, might be the first in their families to go to college. And the last facet is this school-wide district approach to equity. It gives schools the tools to think about what are they doing and how is impacting their students. We know that if there are barriers and challenges that our students who are in the academic middle are facing, that might be first in their families to go to college, how are we addressing them as a school, as a system, and as a community? How are we making sure that they're bridges to success for those students? So that just because you come from a particular background or zip code, that you get the chances that everybody else gets to be successful. And so what are the tools that we're looking at to be, to make sure that our instruction, our systems, our leadership, and our culture as a school and a community is supportive of these students? So that is what we consider to be our, the Avid Tops strategy. How does our partnership work? This Venn diagram, which at first glance might seem wordy, but it does lay out a general scope of how we work together. So I'll point you to the left side of it. And it really shows that the district owns this elective course. And how do we create an environment in our schools and our system to meet our graduate vision, keep equity at the center, and make our students ready for the next steps? But we know that's not necessarily enough if we're closing gaps and increasing opportunities for our targeted students. So that's where the partnership is beautiful. On the, on the, in the middle, what you'll see is we work together with, with Boys and Girls Club in this partnership. These students have college-age tutors. We have almost a hundred tutors currently in the district, working with our students. They go on college visits and field trips. We have guest speakers. We have extended academic planning opportunities and career and college readiness opportunities that go beyond the school, that go into workplaces, that involve experiential learning that ties back to the learning but extends far beyond it, that includes families and caring adults. And then where the, the Boys and Girls Club comes into place, and this is where our collective impact happens, we build off of each other's strengths. An organization that is, has roots in our community and does great work. We're able to do mentoring for our students who need it, to have a caring professional be a, a network mentor for these students. Some are job internships that are paid. We're able to also provide leadership and service learning opportunities through our partnership. And it's bolded, but it's hard to even capture how impactful our college coaching is. Our college coaching for our students in the Avid Tops elective class starts really when they start, when they enter high school. But it picks up their junior year. And these college coaches under Alex and Glenna's work, work with them all the way through college. So we know the students that fit this demographic typically going to have possibilities to slip up, to have changes in course, and we need information and coaching. And so all of our students have that opportunity through this partnership.
One thing that Alex, not, excuse me, Langston didn't mention was, so Avid is a national model. This partnership between M M S D and Boys and Girls Club and Avid Tops is the only foundation. And so I think that's really important. I think as we talk about the evaluation and where we're seeing great success around post-secondary, it is because of this intentional partnership and very thoughtful process about what students need to be successful, not just in high school, but outside of high school.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was mentioned. Right here, again, a slide that just shows the timeline. We thought it was important, even though we're talking about the future M O A, to make sure that everyone was grounded in kind of like, where did we begin? And who are we serving right now? And so on the right-hand side, in the green, you'll see that Avid Tops started in two thousand and eight, and it only started with three sections over at East High School. And now across our high schools, we're at forty sections and serving eight hundred and sixty-eight students at the high school. So in a little over ten years, the expansion has been huge. It's been really powerful. Right now, we are at full capacity at East and LaFala High School. And for us, full capacity means twelve sections, three sections at each grade level. Even though we're at forty sections, eight hundred and sixty-eight students, we still have opportunity to expand because Memorial and West High School are not at full capacity yet. So opportunities to still grow. You'll note that we formalized our partnership for the first time through our M O A process in two thousand and thirteen. And then in two thousand and sixteen, we went into our first high-intensity M O A. And we are just rounding that up, rounding that out. On the, on the left-hand side, in terms of middle school, through our partnership, Boys and Girls Club and M M S D together support two of our middle schools, Cherokee Heights and Wright Middle School. As a district, Avid does live in eleven of our twelve, eleven of our twelve middle schools. But through our partnership, those two middle schools receive extra support through our partnership with Boys and Girls Club. I won't go through everything else, but you will see that there is an investment on both ends from the Boys and Girls Club and from M M S D to fully support the implementation of Avid Tops. So some of the changes to the upcoming memorandum of agreement that I just wanted to highlight is that we ensured that it was aligned to our new strategic framework. So two specific areas. This area of Goal Three, where we have an intentional focus on our African-American students and improvement of goals for our African-American students. This is where, over the last three years, we've been really trying to do a better job as a system to ensure that more African-American students are accessing Avid and, and persisting through Avid. And that is still something that we are continuing with because we know in Avid, we have a ninety-nine to a hundred percent graduation rate. And so we want to ensure that we are able to work closely with the goal we have in our framework. I think this other idea of black excellence and what does that mean? Langston talked about that many times, to ensure that students are able to showcase and reach their full potential. And Avid is a great space for that to happen. We did some refinement to our goals and metrics, and we used our evaluation, as well as what we learned over the last three years, to make some refinements. And what you'll notice in the, in the M O A is that we intentionally decided to raise our metrics every year over the next three years. Through our conversations and through what we have been monitoring over the last three years, we've done a really good job of meeting most of our goals and metrics. We wanted to kind of just take that and say, we're just going to raise that bar really high. And then we said, well, let's be really thoughtful about each year, making an increase that we thought was significant and also going to be impactful. So you'll see that as a change to the former M O A. We've also really thought about the integration of our budgets and how we are complementing each other and how we're working together to ensure that we're being as thoughtful and as efficient about our resources as possible and our organizational structures. I think we've learned a lot over these last few years, how to work together and where those organizational structures need to meet. So those are a few of our changes that I just wanted to highlight in our M O A. We're going to spend a few minutes just going through some highlights of the evaluation, and then we will stop for questions and anything else that needs to be asked.
Yeah, we just have a few slides on the evaluation. As a high-intensity partnership, providing an evaluation of how well our, our program is working is critical for us to understand how to continue to do the work we're doing and get better. So this particular evaluation, which you have access to, really focused on the impact of Avid Tops and on post-secondary enrollment and high school outcomes. And so we'll go through that. Just to point out a little bit of the methodology, we wanted to isolate the impact of what being in the Avid elective class does for a student. And so working with the U W, they can, they constructed a comparison group. And this comparison group looks very similar to our Avid Tops students at the time they entered high school, except that they didn't have the class. So in every way that we could measure them, they were the same. And then we compared what they looked like after being in the class. And so one of the first things we looked at was, did they enroll in college or post-secondary opportunities? And just to point out that the yellow bars are the students that had the Avid elective class, and the blue bars are the comparison group who looked just like them, except they didn't have Avid. And these, these results, quite frankly, are extraordinary. The researchers at U W tell us that they've never seen results like this, that you see this much difference from students who look the same, except that they had one class. And so our goal was to have students enroll in college who had aspirations for college. And we can see that this makes a difference across a variety of demographics. The second metric we looked at was cumulative GPA by participation. And you can see that there are impacts at the district level, but also in key demographic categories such as low-income students of color and male students of color. Just for clarification, the, the avid guy, person, non-gender, but with a, with a cap that is fully, fully filled in, it's just at a higher level than not. But we see, we see impacts across a variety of different demographics. And then when we look at A P honors and course credits, one of the things that we ask, cajole, push, and support our students in the Avid elective to do is to take A P courses, to take honors courses, to take dual-credit courses. Because we know those experiences will prepare them for success at the next level. And so we measure ourselves as to how successful we are at that. As you can see, that there, there are significant impacts compared to their peers on this count
And so last, just to highlight, some of our goals that we have as a partnership is to continue to have one hundred percent graduation on time for all of our students in Avid, one hundred percent of our students enroll in one or more A P classes, ninety-five percent of them to enroll in college. And for this next M O A, I just want to clarify this, seventy-five percent graduate from college in six years is our aspirational goal. But over the next three years, we actually are trying to hit it at fifty percent. So I apologize, we, and made a change, and it just didn't get changed here. So for the M O A, it is actually at fifty percent for our students, not only to enter into college, to persist through, and to leave with an associate's or a bachelor's degree, at least fifty percent of our students. So at this time, we both, we have both us, as well as our wonderful friends from Boys and Girls Club at the table. So I open it up for any questions.
Thank you.
I have a bunch of career sports in, if that's all right.
Sure, if, unless, if people have them on the same topic, we might group them, stay on a certain topic, but kick it off.
On the high-intensity partnership, I like the idea, but I see there are supports for low-income. I see there are supports for individuals of color. What are the supports for English-language learners and learners with disabilities?
So the, the elective class is just one class that the students are taking within the day. We have actually quite a few English-language learners, and we've had a steady amount of students with disabilities in the Avid elective class. We work with our students. One of the things that the elective class allows us to do is work with students and staff to develop plans that are successful for them. It allows them to reflect on their goals and the supports that they need. And allows them to, allows the elective teacher and the site team, which is monitoring the success of all of our students, to think about what are the supports and, and plans in place for these students. So it's actually an extra layer of support that most students that were not in the elective class have. The specific supports for the students would vary according to their need. But one of the things that we do have is that we have, for example, for English-language learners, for those that are, that, that, that need external supports, we are able to provide opportunities to engage with learning opportunities outside the school through our partnership. But, but most importantly, our students are able to really work with the staff that are in the building. If they need support, you know, after school, we have, at two of our high schools, we have additional tutoring opportunities. So we, we really pride ourselves on looking at the student and whatever their situation is and providing the support that's necessary for success.
So Avid could be compatible with I E Ps?
Absolutely. So we, we've, we have students with I E Ps in Avid. And, and we, we've been successful with those students. Those students have, in the middle, with aspirations for college, and that's the place for them to be.
Additionally, just two more to review. East, I know, is everyone takes Avid the first year. Are you considering expanding that?
Or something similar to that?
So.
Planning school?
Planning school?
Yeah, demonstration school. So, yeah, so that that's a really good question. So um, not every student at East is in the Avid elective. But when we talk about Avid schoolwide, there are instructional strategies that are best practices that everybody has access to at East, but not just East. Actually, all four of our high schools uh have Avid strategies. East just does it more.
Okay. And my last one is I you said that we expanded to eleven middle schools, but why is only Cherokee, Wright included and that the other nine?
Well, I can start that and then I can let the club answer. Um, I know that it was proximity. So the the students at Wright and Cherokee, uh, a lot of them were attending the club. We were sharing students and because we were sharing the students, um, it was an opportunity to expand the partnership there.
Yeah, I would just add that it's really uh we're test driving the middle school model. I think it's an opportu- it's a potential growth area to see what works in the middle schools. We know right now our model uh as a system across the high school level is extremely effective as Langston and Cindy just articulated. Uh, right now, we're looking to see how we can deepen those supports in the middle school level. Um, and so we have, I think, just some additional refinements to make before uh any scale would would be able to happen at the middle school across the other schools.
Gloria? Nikki, were you done?
You're.
Okay.
So just to follow on the ELL, I noticed that um the subgroup was a small sample size, so it wasn't included. Are we doing anything to, in the future, to help support those students to take advantage of them with us?
Yeah, actually, because um some of those reports were over the years, we have we have doubled the number of ELL students in the last five years that are that are in um Avid, the Avid elective class. And so uh we have uh about forty percent of our students that are English language learners in our Avid elective class. And we continue, we want to continue to 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 uh encourage and support students to um join the class that are English language learners.
Yeah, I would just add to that, I think it's similar to our students with disabilities. Um, that as we continue to go through recruitment efforts, application processes, it's something we're paying attention to. I think over these last few years, African Americans were also depending on which school you were at is is something that we were focused on. Um, so yes, and a reminder that uh Avid is is limited to a certain number of seats and to uh the academic middle. So as much as we're also ensuring that we want to increase for certain areas, knowing it won't serve every student, which is why we also talk about Avid schoolwide as an approach where all students would have access to some of those strategies and some of the same practices that we use in the elective.
Right, yeah, just another question. Um, do we follow students when they're in college? And do we have those numbers as far as um their success rate when graduating from college?
So first, I I just wanted to follow up on the ELL and and disability students. So on um my team's side, we do sort of uh passing of the baton through our TOPS coordinators who are um supporting our seniors transitioning into college. And one of those pieces um that we've sort of been refining is working with our college coaches. So if students do have IEPs or are labeled as ELL in high school, a lot of them, the same way, unsure of how to navigate that in the K through twelve setting. The same goes for higher education. And so really making sure we're supporting our students to be able to identify and be matched with those departments on campus so that they're receiving that continued support even while at college. And I think that's something new that we're really looking at and making sure students have access to um ju- based on even my experience with working in higher education, knowing that that's really an obstacle that students face once they get to college and really are um alone and feeling unsupported, really making sure we're helping them navigate and really making the best choice based on what their academic and social um needs are as it relates to their success. Um, and then as far as, you know, college completion, we're definitely tracking all of that. Again, nearly four hundred and I think ninety-six students currently enrolled out of over eight hundred students who have been a part of the program since two thousand and ten from that first graduating class. Um, and even with these metrics, we know um forty-five percent is um our goal for six-year, um, a hundred and fifty percent completion, which this will be our first semester where we can actually track that and set that benchmark. And I can tell you, we're already at forty-five and we're expected to be above fifty percent this first year um with our two thousand and thirteen class for students with a an associate's and or a bachelor's degree. Um, so we know we're making strides in that area, um, which is well above national metrics specifically for the population that we're serving. So we're really excited um about that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
The only piece I might add to is the staff capacity. So we have a team of six full-time college success coaches, dedicated staff members year-round, ensuring that students' persistence and completion rate. So there's a substantial investment in human capital and resource towards the college persistence of our students. So I wanted to add that.
So first, I want to say that I really appreciate. I appreciate the history piece because I was reminded that I was actually in a group of guests in two thousand and eight that got the first presentation. And Brianna was a second grader and I said, this is where Brianna needs. And I'm really happy that she is at Avid, Ella Follett. Um, I, the other piece that I wanted to comment on, which I appreciate my fellow board colleagues already brought some really good questions that I was also thinking, is that usually folks use equality and equity as interchangeable terms and Avid is clear uh equitable strategy. And what I was thinking was that within that strategy, within the the elective class that is already really embedded in equitable practices, uh, what are some of the refinement of the lens? Like, right, how to calibrate the lens to even deeper? In particular around students with IEPs, uh, when we're looking at post-secondary plans? You know, what are, you know, what are some of the enhancement for Avid students when we're doing post-secondary plans for for students with IEPs? What are some of the, and I'm looking at Nikki because she brought up that question. I'm gonna look at Gloria. Yeah, uh, 'cause she brought up the question around Yale students. And what are some of the additional equitable strategies that we haven't, you know, scaled up yet? Or uh that could be used in a control um container that's already really heavily around not only YALs but undocumented students? You know, I know you have metrics around FASSA and that's a huge um barrier for a lot of our students. So what are some of the things that that can be used? Which leads to um a couple of my questions, first questions. One is, what are some of the opportunities beyond the growth uh that you already shared? And also, what is the waiting list? Because I know we were swit- you know, it was almost like a college application because we didn't get into middle school. And then she, you know, was like, this is it, let's, you know, cross our fingers here. And then we cried when we got the Avid letter, so.
So I'll just speak to a couple of the opportunities. I think, as you pointed out, the the Avid elective class provides a litmus for how our schools are doing in terms of who's getting into elective class speaks to your waitlist, right? Um, where are the opportunities in the school and who's getting into elective class? Do we have the right students in there? Um, it always is an opportunity for us to look at the supports that we have schoolwide. Um, so that's one way of approaching that. The second one of within the elective class, within the opportunity to um innovate and do things better, a couple of the things that we're that we've been pushing in on with the support is um helping students plan better for beyond high school. We've been, we've been able to do things with our extra resources um that have helped inform decisions that schools are making as a whole. For example, when we're talking about not just English language learners or undocumented students or students with disabilities, where are they getting the support and resources to make the make really complicated, difficult decisions about the next four to six years of their life? And so we've been working with the club and resources about what do students need to see, hear and do in order to make effective decision-making? And not just the students, but their families as well. Um, because these are family decisions. And what is what is the importance of peer groups in those decision-making um um practices? And so um we've been rethinking how we do our college visits. We've been rethinking how we bring in people to engage with our students, our speakers, our mentors. What does financial planning look like? How many people do students need to really think around and think with about their plans? Um, and we've been looking at the plans, not just within Avid, but we've been able to use the Avid elective class and those students who have that desire to really rethink about and and pressure test the ideas of what is an effective planning environment for students who don't have a history of college? Um, and so those are the areas that we're doubling down. And and and, you know, clearly with our undocumented students, what are the conversations that we're having um with not just our partners, but our universities? And what what needs to change in our system? We've, out of this, we're actually coming out of some, um, our students have become advocates uh about what they need, right? And our teachers have become advocates about what they need and our families have become advocates.
I I just want to add a a little to uh what Langston said that um uh he didn't mention. Um, just in terms of the curricular pieces, in terms of the Avid elective, um, our Office of Multilingual and Global Education, along with Langston, have tried to do a crosswalk around QTEL, which is Quality Teaching for English Learners, which is um something that a few of our schools have been looking into. And how do we see where those two things complement each other and where there are gaps to think about what additional supports for English learners are needed into the Avid elective? Um, one thing Langston didn't mention also, which is a a sweet space where students are getting individualized supports and a a lot of targeted supports that meet the needs of a student with disability or um an English language learner is the tutorology. So a couple of times a week, we have these tutors that were mentioned that come in and students are able to identify um their problem of confusion or something that's coming up in their class. And that is a time when kids are in very small groups and working with a tutor to to dig into that. And that really has been um a great benefit for our students, both at middle school and at high school. And it starts to look different as students get up in the grades, but it's a place where individual um students are really getting their needs met. I just want to answer your question about the waitlist thing, because I think it wasn't fully mentioned. Um, and the La Follette feeder, for example, almost one in five of our students is in Avid at La Follette. And a school like White Horse at a middle school that isn't part of our partnership, but has a has a large waitlist. So the La Follette feeder seems to have a waitlist. Um, East uh uh seems to have a waitlist. At West, where we just started an expansion, one of the reasons for the expansion was uh the need for them to serve more students and more students of color. So I think um each feeder pattern is in a different place in terms of um, I would say, fidelity of implementation. And as schools start to uh really improve those practices, you start to see where there is a waitlist because of only a certain number of seats in terms of ensuring that we are being super thoughtful to this targeted strategy um for the students in the academic middle. But um it does vary by uh middle school and high school feeder, but there are places where uh we start to see uh larger waitlists than other areas.
Nikki?
So I'm I'm like waiting for like and. Um, sorry, I know it's mostly, you know, the Avid TOPS high school side, but to your point, I would also add um a piece that Alex and I are working on, um, right, with our formalized partnership with Madison College, which is our top feeder institution for our program participants. We know that specifically that population you're asking about, so students with IEPs, students with disabilities or um ELL students are taking dev ed courses at higher rates, which we know those don't count towards your degree completion, which is prolonging their time, costing them more money, which we know tuition is a challenge and a barrier for all students, um, no matter what your background is. Um, and so really working with Madison College to try to figure out what are strategies that we can use to better prepare students for those placement tests so that they're placing out of those classes, but more importantly, more prepared academically so that they're not having to take them? Um, or what are some sort of boot camp strategies over the summer that we can support in partnership with our our partner institutions to make sure they're starting freshman year as freshmen's um and completing that year and entering their second year as sophomores? Because we know that then increases the likelihood that they'll graduate on time. And so that's that is a challenge, at least on on my team's end, that we're seeing a lot of students are still having to need to take those dev ed courses, which just prolongs their time um from being on track to completion.
Sure. Before we go to Nikki, I am really glad that Cindy mentioned QTEL, Quality Teaching for English Language or English Learners, uh, work that Aye De Waki is doing with some of our secondary schools. The emphasis there is on academic language development, and this is really important. It's not just uh essential for English learners, but really for all students to learn, to be college-ready. Um, and I just love the idea that you guys are taking that work and integrating it into the the Avid work and MOA. I think it's incredibly important. I mean, even think of tutorology, right, as an amazing opportunity to develop and practice academic language together. Um, that's just incredibly important. Just wanted to pause and recognize and appreciate that emphasis. I think it's really good.
Just um one uh small, one small suggestion. Um, there are some conferences in the disability community and self-directioned transition that you guys might want to advertise that. Normally, they're in the DOWS. Um, they sometimes are up a little further north. And that there's a large gathering of individuals with disabilities often in the transition age that you might find helpful.
Ali? Can you show me a breakdown of the current demographics? Who's currently uh in Avid?
I I can't write the second, but absolutely, we can share with you, we have that detail, yeah.
Okay. Um, can you tell me what percentage of Avid students are black?
I don't have the number in front of me. Um, we we've generally been about twenty-five percent is about where we've been with our African American students.
Can you tell me what percentage of students have disabilities?
Yeah, it's it's uh six percent.
Is it possible if African American students make up twenty-five percent of students in Avid currently enrolled? And you're aiming for fifty percent of students going to college and succeeding in college within six years, that you could achieve that percentage while not including any of your African American students?
Is the question, is that possible?
Yes.
Well, I because our we are tracking how our African American students are doing in our evaluation. Um, we know that our African American students are graduating, um, and so.
From high school or college?
What'd you say?
From high school or college or both?
From high school and college. We're we're tracking both of those those metrics. Um, so there would, there would, there would have to be some significant reversals um for that to be the case, which we don't expect. We're, our trend has been upward in terms of our evaluation and our numbers on how well our African American students are doing. We've in, we're working on increasing the number of African American students that get in, but we're also increasing the retention and success. Uh, what we found over the last three years is that we've increased the retention of our African American students and our success in the program from the high school. Um, and then we're still, as we as we just mentioned, as Glenn had just mentioned, um, we're waiting for that first district-wide cohort to hit that six-year period for college.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question? What is the one middle school that doesn't participate in Avid?
Sure, currently Badger Rock does not have Avid. We have, I uh, just to clarify, we have done some of the professional learning for them as a school, so teachers are learning the Avid strategies. They do not have the elective class.
In addition to the information I asked for about demographics, it would be really helpful to have the demographics, like the racialized information around the students with disabilities, right? So are your students with disabilities more likely to be one group of students when you're talking about race or ethnicity? And I feel like I had one last question.
Isn't that page ten? Is this on the evaluation?
Yeah, that's for twenty seventeen, eighteen. Um, but we we have, we have this year's data, which wasn't, this is last year's data in the evaluation. We can see. Yep.
Ali, did you say you had another question?
Yeah, so it seems like the project is allowing young people to access kind of accelerated experiences within their education, right? Including taking AP courses. And so I I was curious about whether or not that conflicts with the goal of having students um enter college as freshmen, right? Um, if students are taking a really rigorous, you know, set of classes and achieving all of their credits, wouldn't the goal be to save students money um by having? Wouldn't the goal be to save students money, um, by having them take college-level courses while they're still in high school? Having students enter college as sophomores?
That would be, we're we're moving in that direction, right? I mean, the goal is to have stu-, the first goal is to have students be successful in college. And so having them take the rigor of AP courses. Um, and when available, dual credit courses or courses on college campuses helps prepare them for the environment of what it's like to be successful in college. But we also know that financial piece is important too, so if students can get ahead of the game, um, by getting credits. Um, that's important, um, if our students are able to matriculate into the uh, early college STEM academy. And get opportunities to get dual credits, that's great, um, our ultimate goal, and this is part of the National Avid Framework. Is to have students enter college with the uh, with the intention and foundation to graduate. So, if I enter as a sophomore, that gives me more momentum, so as we build our systems, um, we are definitely looking forward to moving in that direction.
Is Avid itself dual credit?
Avid is not.
Okay.
But dual credit is through the Secondary Office, another major goal for the school district to expand access generally to dual credit. Um, and we can always give you guys more information on that related effort. Um, the more we expand dual credit opportunities as a district, the more not just Avid students, but. But every student can can gain college credit while in high school, um, so related, but um.
Thank you all so much, I really appreciate it.
Kate? Um, I have, I guess I have kind of three pieces of questions, um, and the first couple are kind of all in the spirit of. Trying to understand what, what you guys think this, the like secret sauce is here, because there's a lot in Avid. And it's kind of hard to understand, and Avid is expensive. And it's kind of hard to understand if any of those pieces are more or less impactful. Um, so if some piece were, say, less impactful, could we reallocate some funding and actually expand Avid access to more kids using the same amount of dollars? So, that's the spirit of the questions, just to kind of.
Okay. It's helpful.
Um, so, can you guys just talk a little bit about the budget, I was, I'm struggling with like the number of kids, the em, the board doc says fifteen hundred, the. Um, annual report says five hundred, like how, what's, what's just like the cost per kid? And talk a little bit about how that funding breaks out across Boys and Girls Club, I couldn't access the funding, the budget doc for the Boys and Girls Club. It's a link and you need approval, so can you just talk a little bit about? I guess first cost per kid and then second, what do you think is the like, is there any insight into which pieces are more or less impactful?
So, I I don't know the cost per student, I can talk about the budgetary expenses and I'm.
How many kids?
Total, it's, uh, so through the partnership, we have eight hundred and sixty-eight high school students. And a hundred and thirty-two middle schoo-, school students currently through the partnership. So, about a thousand students.
Okay, is there any reason that the report says five hundred or is that?
The the seventeen eighteen report?
Did we double it in the last year or?
Is this seventeen two report is just on high school, correct?
Starts at.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it didn't include the middle school.
So, so the report only included, it was a subset of the total number of students that they were able to be in the.
Oh, okay.
In the evaluation, both at the beginning and the end, so students who were added in the middle weren't included in the evaluation.
So, there were fifteen hundred kids that enrolled and five hundred and eighty of them went through the whole program, that's what this report is saying?
It was, it's saying that they were involved in that part of the evaluation. Because the students are at different points of the pipeline in that.
Okay, so the evaluation.
Right, the evaluation set parameters about who they could actually set up for their comparison group. Which weren't necessarily all the students that were, excuse me, all the students that were accessing Avid that year.
Okay.
There was fif-, the fifteen hundred included the students that outside of the partnership at the other nine middle schools.
Got it, okay, that's super helpful, um, so a thousand-ish kids.
Mm-hmm.
And one point eight million dollars on the district side. And some other funds from other sources, private sources, Boys and Girl, okay.
Do you want me to talk about the down, the breakdown a little?
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So, I will um, start and then Langston can chime in, so in terms of funding, the funding goes to. Pay for teachers that teach the Avid elective class, so at middle school and high school. Uh, the number of sections varies based on schools, but teachers are for the Avid elective class, so FTE. In addition to that, at middle school and high school, there is an Avid Coordinator that is a a percentage of a full-time position. And that Avid Coordinator uh, does professional development, has to do some of the uh, paperwork and documentation that happens. Cuz we're part of the national system, so there's reporting that needs to happen. Um, field trips and some other supplies and resources for the students as well are covered under that, what am I missing?
Yeah, there is a, the link worked for me, I don't know, I just clicked on it, but there is a.
I know, I think it's cuz you have an.
Oh, is it?
Okay.
We'll make sure you guys get it.
Um, that one other thing and then I'll turn it over to Langston to add, um, professional development, so within that budget. Um, we uh, have people that attend the Summer Institute, which is part of our expectation of Avid. And then also have started to rethink kind of the best way to do professional development, so we've brought in some of the Avid trainers here locally, which is a more. Um, cost-effective model, so professional development for um, Avid, not just Avid teachers, but also to create this school-wide as a piece of that budget as well.
Those are the main pieces on the, on the district side of the budget.
Can you just talk to the Boys and Girls Club piece of it?
Yes, we can give some texture on the Boys and Girls Club investment, so annually, it's around a one point four million dollar investment that we make. Both into the high school and college success portions of the budget. Um, approximately eight hundred plus thousand dollars, I would say, is invested in uh, your MSD graduates, so in the college portion for. Um, six full-time coaches, uh, for our AVP of persistence, um, and we support collaboratively an investment in the high schools. Um, the chart that we will make sure that you get in terms of the Google link, uh, it's an annual investment that we've outlined, uh, over two hundred thousand dollars annually. For tutor contributions, the tutor wages, the high school student supplies, the the high school field trips. Um, and again, I I feel, we we feel confident that this is, um, while there, it is resource-rich. Um, it's it's making the kind of impacts, but we're seeing statistically significant impacts. Um, in GPA gains, in on-time graduation rates, in on-time matriculation rates, removing the needle on persistence. Um, I do know as well, we did have the University of Wisconsin do a cost um, study, which we could also surface to the committee, that would be helpful.
So, it's, so it sounds like it's about three grand a kid, but one point four plus one point eight for a thousand-ish kids.
That would include those, sorry, um, that would include, our investment includes the college students, so about.
Got it, okay.
Five hundred students in college, so annually about fifteen hundred students are served.
And do you guys have a sense of which pieces, you just rattled off a lot of different things, right? Which pieces are more, like, what are the real levers here that are driving? I mean, the big impact that's very clear is college matriculation, right? The many of the academic ones are not so statistically significant, so like, but the clear impact is college matriculation. So, what's, what's the thing, right, or the three things or the, or is it really?
So, I'll I'll start, so I think that's a really, I I really appreciate your question, I think it's hard to answer because it is a package deal. It is a full set of wraparound uh, supports for students and based on years and years of research from this national model. So, I don't know, like, it's kind of the Jenga game to me, like, I would be really concerned if I pulled out this piece. That that might kind of have everything flop, I mean, it's intentional about this Avid elective class that is for the group of students. And the extra supports they get in, the access to college, the the preparing for and supporting around uh, college preparedness. Maybe in ten years, when we do a much better job as a system around thinking about post-secondary preparedness and success. There may be a conversation where that's already happening schoolwide and it's not necessarily um, needed. But at this point, um, we haven't actually gotten great momentum as a entire school system across the board. And thinking about how we're ensuring every kid is well-prepared through FAFSA, through college visits, through all of that. So, I I think it's a a great question and I think it's actually a question that I don't have an answer to, because I do believe that it is a package. And all of the things together are what is helping us get the success. And partnered with, I I have to say partnered with, where Boys and Girls Club has really started to do that college end of it. And where we're actually with our students uh, in college and going through and persisting through college, where we're starting to see some of that success. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I guess I'm, I guess, I totally, I I know there's no answer to my question, I appreciate, like, I I I'm clearly.
Thank you.
A and, and I think there's a, there's some judgment involved in, do we want a waitlist, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or do we, like, could we, could we make that X dollars per kid reach more kids? Um, if we said, you know what, we think that the tutoring X times a week is, could be why, like, I I don't know, right? I'm asking you guys as educators, um, we have two hundred kids across our whole district that are twelfth graders in Avid, right? Like, we, could we have two hundred and fifty with the same amount of money if we were willing to look at the pieces? Like a Jenga game, right, but add one back on top, right, so so that's, that's how the game is played, right? So, I I just, it, I appreciate that there's no perfect answer to that, but um.
I would just add, I would just add this, and and I think one of the things that we we focus on is that we're we're trying to change a system. And it, so that's why we're taking a holistic approach, we do know that when we evaluate. And uh, our our programs, every year our our schools go through an evaluation. We know that the schools who have greater fidelity to the entire system of Avid have bigger gains for their kids. So, that's why we have a little bit of hesitancy to try to pull pieces out, because we know schools that are tighter to the full system. At looking at all the pieces that go around the kid, all the things that create the system and the culture that those students exist in. Are the things that we need to pay attention to, it's not just one thing that has a kid be successful or not. It's the full uh, culture system, the leadership in the building and the instruction, not just in the Avid elective class. But what are we doing to provide systems of support for connecting with our other resources in the building? And so, um, that approach has gotten us increasing gains in our outcomes. Um, to look at it at a holistic way, to look at it in a way that we are very intentional with the number of students that are involved. So that we have uh, uh, processes and programs of support for them when they're in middle school, when they're in high school and when they're beyond. So that we've learned from that and so that, as Cindy mentioned, hopefully, as we begin to change the system, we can then. Learn from that about how, what pieces play, but right now, we know that we need to change the system.
Lang, Langston, what percentage of students that are on the waitlist as freshmen are offered spaces? Uh, in sophomore year because of, um, yeah, because of attrition?
So, the waitlist, that in high school, the waitlist, um, for the students who are maintained, um, being students in the middle. Um, we are usually able to get those students who are still interested an opportunity to get into the Avid elective class. Um, the waitlist conversation about people staying on the waitwa-, waitlist is currently more significant at the middle school level. Um, in high school, um, our attrition has, we we don't lose very many students anymore, um, so there.
If you read the math, right, half of the students that start end, so I don't know.
It's not, that's not true.
But it's limited on high school.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I I just multiplied the attrition, nine to ten, ten to eleven.
But it doesn't take into account those who are added in and so that there's, there's. As Langston had said, the five hundred is because of, it doesn't include those who add in after freshman year.
Yeah, but if you leave, you're still counted as leaving, right? I mean, if if we have half the number of kids that start finish.
So, there's a couple of things about students who leave, the the biggest number of students who leave the program is because they leave the school. So, the biggest attrition is because students move on to another school, move out of district or something like that. Um, but we've uh, we've improved our year-to-year retention rate um, for students. Um, which is uh, above ninety percent, um, for our high school students now. Um, and so, but we are able to, in many cases, uh, for students who uh, were waitlisted, um, in the original selection process. We are able to offer many of them a a a spot in the elective class in high school.
Okay, I guess, and here.
Ananda, did you have a question?
I I had one more question, so.
Is it on the same subject?
On attri-, attrition?
Sure.
Um, I, well, no, I'm, I was gonna ask about academics, so.
Yeah, they.
The attrition data in here is quite different, just in the, I mean, it's, it's, I I may be confused, I I said sixty-six percent ninth to tenth.
So.
Eighty-nine percent ninth to eleven, ninety percent.
So, just the way that that particular uh, reads was the number of students that showed up in ninth grade from the year before. And that reflects the fact that there are fewer seats in ninth grade than there are eighth grade, because we're going from eleven middle schools to four high schools. So, there's fewer sections, so, and the students also reapply. So, um, uh, in ninth grade, even if you were in the Avid elective class in eighth grade, you reapply. So, we al-, we often get students that weren't in the Avid elective class in eighth grade who apply, who fit our criteria. Maybe they weren't in the district, maybe they weren't um, in the class. And so, the, when we look at the number of students who were in eighth grade that show up again in ninth grade, which is where you get that sixty-six percent, that's why that's low.
From ninth to tenth.
From from eighth to ninth, so it's about when you show up in ninth is is what that should be.
That's what happened if you haven't applied in seventh grade, you didn't get in.
It says ninth to tenth.
Okay, well, that that, I mean, I apologize for that.
So, it sounds like for, prior to the board meeting, we need some clarification on retention.
Yup.
Um, so let's, does that, and Kate, if you have additional questions that didn't get answered, please. Ananda?
Two other questions, one is, so along the lines to Kate's earlier questions around the 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 secret sauce. Um, but more around staff and teachers, you know, what are some of the things, some lessons learned, cuz. Um, and also, what is the percentage of staff of color or numbers, you know, just overall, what what that looks like? And then what are some, you know, are there differences with trainings, cuz I know that they meet as a cohort as well? Um, are there particular trainings around cultural humility, racial equity, you know, like just deeper training? Cuz their class may, their their class composition may look different than their their peers. Uh, and then my uh, second question that it may be or may not be related is the impact on pathways. Or pathways impact on Avid or Avid impacts pathways, I I I'm still confused with like all of that, so. What what are insights or lessons learned or as you're moving things forward?
So, I'll start around the first question, around uh, professional development. Um, I don't know the exact numbers of our teachers of color across the board, but again, data we can get to. Um, in terms of professional development, um, around culturally responsive teaching and things like that. Avid has a set of um, professional development strands that teachers have to go to, one is culturally relevant teaching. And so that is um, a space where they have it. Lessons learned, I think, um, in terms of uh, uh, good lessons learned is our teachers that follow their students. Uh, throughout their four years has been um, super impactful for the students. So, uh, that our model is that a teacher stays with that Avid elective class in ninth grade through twelfth grade. That does not unfortunately always pan out in the way that we have planned. When we have seen that play out, we have seen really great success. Um, so, so the the professional development, teachers have standard MMSD professional development and then all of the additional Avid professional development. Some which I mentioned, they go to the Avid Institute for, some that we have brought here. Um, Avid teachers also have an opportunity to have planning time where they're doing their own professional learning together. And then our schools, um, like Langston said, schools that are um, doing a much better job with fidelity, Avid is infused within the professional development. That happens across the school, so a lot of the uh, academic strategies, the WICAR strategies, um, those are part of professional development as well.
What strategy?
Um, a WICAR uh, strategy, it's one of the academic strategies that um, happen through Avid. Anything else you wanna add about that before we answer the second question? So, to answer your second question, which um, I appreciate. So to answer your second question, which, um, I appreciate that question. So, a reminder that pathways, as we conceptualize and pathways as we thought about it, was an instructional design or a school-wide transformation? Kind of the way you do school. And there's the five tenants to that, which is the program of study, which is where Avid would fall into it. Student supports, experiential learning, academic and career planning. So, so pieces that would complement Avid, but we see pathways as the way you do school. As implemented right now, it is only within the health services pathway current state. So, it's not actually getting us the full school-wide transformation yet. Um, so, so, so that's to answer that piece of it. In terms of with Avid, we have many of our pathways students that take an Avid elective class. A, a lot of it comes down to choice in terms of a seven-period day, or even in a current state of four block in terms of what students want to choose to take within their program of study or within their courses. So, Avid is something that absolutely can fit under the pathways design where students, um, want to take that. I think students also, we know, wanna take a world language. So, the conversations we've had most recently is if a student is in Avid and if they take a world language, they don't have options for a third elective. And we always say this is where the voice and choice of students and families come in, where students are choosing to be within this pathway system. And they may also want to stay with Avid. So, there's a limited number of, uh, sections or courses that kids can take throughout a day. And that's where, uh, students and families make that decision. Uh, can they be part of the pathway system and, and be in Avid? Absolutely. Does it come down to making decisions around that? Yes, it does.
So scheduling is the biggest issue, which is.
Yeah, I, I think, I think scheduling is a very complex, I said this a few months ago, it's a very complex process that I don't think, uh, people, until you're in it, understand trying to fit every bit and piece together. I don't know if it's scheduling, I think it's the number of options a kid has. You have seven periods in a day, we have graduation requirements, so students have to take a set number of courses to make sure they graduate. And then you have this many slots left on your schedule, and that's where students and families make decisions about what those slots are filled with.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that maybe one of the lessons learned, both in its collaboration with pathways and overall, is that academic and career planning isn't a one or two-time-a-year thing. It is infused into the everyday conversation of what it is to be a student, and what do I wanna be when I, when I go to my next step? And I think that's one of the conversations, it doesn't just live with a counselor or in a class or in a period. Um, and whether it's about which courses do I take, and what are the impacts, or what do I need to do to prepare? Um, no, you know, having people versed in those conversations and willing to engage in those conversations in a culturally relevant, uh, way is important.
Okay, Chris has been waiting, Chris?
Um, I just brought up a new question for me, so I'll jump in the mountain first. It would actually be really helpful to know the percentage of Avid students enrolled in pathways at each of our four high schools. It would be good to break it up by high school, because we know pathways is going differently at different high schools. Um, I also would like to see better retention data. I wanna, I feel like Kate said, that if you do the math in this evaluation report, it's not matching what I'm hearing right now, and I'm confused.
I'm just confused between many.
Yeah, I think I'm just confused. Actually, it would actually be really good, like, to get not just, um, year-to-year retention, but actually get some kind of a sense of like, of the number of kids who enroll in Avid, or accepted in Avid in ninth grade, how many of them are left by twelfth grade? Because we know from this report that staying in pathways for, or not pathways, in Avid for four years has significant benefits. And so I would just kinda like to know more about the cumulative retention. Um, it also would be, if it's, this might be too hard to get, but there were three reasons given in the report for kids leaving. Um, they leave MMSD or their high school, um, and go to a high school that doesn't offer Avid. Um, they voluntarily drop the course, or they are asked to leave the course because their GPA isn't high enough. And I don't know if you can give a breakdown, actually, in terms of percentage of how many kids leave for each of those reasons?
Uh, we can, we can provide that, we, we track that, uh, information.
Um, I did have a question about measuring impact, and that was, I was curious why we're not using ACT college readiness as one of our academic impact measurements for Avid. Um, you can go in and look at the differences just in data dashboard, but that's not the same as, um, propensity score matching, and so I just wonder if that decision was made.
We, we, we came up with these metrics, these were the metrics that we agreed on as a partnership, um, three years ago for the MOA. So that's why we continue with this evaluation, looking at these metrics. And so, there's definitely opportunities for us to look at other ones, such as academic outcome metrics as well.
You know, it's certainly not a perfect measure, but it is data we have, so it seems like we might wanna look at it, so.
I think if I remember correctly, I have to really dig back to my memory banks, but we were really basing it on the research about, around the correlation between GPA and college preparedness and, um, success, which is a much more powerful metric than the ACT exam. There are, Bo actually looked into this, uh, in some depth for us when we redid the strategic framework metrics a year ago. We had quite a big debate over whether or not ACT is even, you know, a powerful metric at all. And there's only like a particular sub-test that shows some sort of correlation, so we can get that data for you too, Chris. So we have studied it really closely. GPA, however, is a very powerful proven metric if the goal is about college readiness, which is what Avid is all about.
And then, um, my third question was, um, trying to get more specific on black excellence. Has the Black Excellence Coalition actually like picked up and looked at Avid as a strategy?
Um, I have not been attending the Black Excellence Coalition meetings. Um, they are about four or five meetings in at this point, and it's, um, it's still kinda forming. I think we talked about this, Chris, um, recently. But, um, that group will be providing their set of recommendations, um, in June, so you'll hear from them at that point.
This, this seems like a place where we could do a better job of articulating how Avid supports black excellence. And so bringing the Black, Black Excellence Coalition into helping us, you know, both articulate what we're doing and also figure out if there are things we could do better to support black excellence, it might be helpful.
Yeah, you know, it's, that's interesting. I don't personally see that as being the role of the coalition, that's certainly not how it's forming.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
I think that's our job, um, as the board and the staff, to be analyzing the programs that are already in existence, um, that we invest in heavily, which is why we're having the conversation we are today. I think that's where Ali's questions were trying to push us, um, to think very specifically about, right? How are we, uh, ensuring not only are, that our programmatic investments are the right ones and they're paying off? But are the metrics ones that, um, I, that we can't gain, right? And that are producing real outcomes for the students that we care most about? That's what I'm hearing, that's what, that's the vibe in the room for me tonight. Um, and I think that's the push for our team. Um, I do wanna ask some clarifying questions before we close this out, but I'll, I'll let you guys keep talking.
Well, yeah, and I would like, we are gonna wrap it up, so Nikki, and then Ananda, Ali, were you, I don't know which one was first here.
Ali was first.
Nikki, and then Ali, and then Ananda.
Okay. On Chris's point, which I found interesting, as well as Ali's point, um, I would like, I know the Black Educated, Educator Network, frankly, that coalition on black excellence has a lot of knowledge. And I just wanna make sure which methods work best on their opinions, um, because I don't know the community the same way as other people do, so I can't ask them if I've never really met. I'm gonna try and attend the meeting on Thursday, they have one.
Cool.
To try and, because I mean, I'm not trying to put my views on anyone else, I'm just trying to see where everyone's at.
Ali? You all have used the term students in the middle as, uh, a couple of times. And I am assuming that that refers to students who have kind of an average GPA. Um, among black students, we see disparities based in gender, right?
Mm-hmm.
So who is in the, who is in the middle, who is in the bottom? Um, I'm, I'm wondering if you can provide information in terms of, uh, the gender of students? So are we seeing more folks who identify as masculine in the cor- in the courses? Are we seeing more folks who identify as feminine? And can you talk a little bit about that label, students in the middle specifically?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, how is that defined?
Yeah, so Avid defines students in the middle as students with a cumulative GPA of two-point-oh to three-point-five. Um, and we can provide you the, the specific data around, um, the gender breakdown by ethnic racial groups. Um, interestingly, there's, there, there are trends that are different by feeder patterns and by schools. And so.
I'm sorry.
There, there are trends about whether students identify as masculine or not. There, there are trends that differ by different schools, different feeder patterns, different trajectories about who's interested in the class. Um, we do track that, and we, we actually work with our schools to look at this election process for the Avid elective class. And so we want that to match the school demographic, but we wanna overrepresent those students that we know will benefit from the class because of, um, their circumstances. And so, um, it's something that we think about, um, when we, when we notice that there's a trend going on, we have conversations with schools about that. And, uh, it's volatile, so it might change from year to year, um, but we do look at those.
I just wanna, well, first, thank you all for, uh, the hard work. I also too wanted to echo the, the sentiment around, you know, what are some of the things that have worked, uh, very successful? Um, and also to say that you, there is at least language in the documents that you provided around aligning with the strategic framework around black excellence. So, I, I, I'm, I'm expecting from this point forward, it's gonna continue to be, uh, more and more salient. And the underrepresentation of, of black boys and the, the family engagement piece, I think that that was, to me, was that, that was really clear. So, um, I think just moving forward is just, continue to make that salient for us and how that gets translated into like the practice of the everyday. And then what are some of the things that can leak out of Avid into other things? So we can also, as we're thinking about, um, non-Avid students, you know, what would that look like? Um, I think that, that was it for me, but I really appreciate, um, the innovation and the partnership. And I, I hope that we continue to, um, be good partners with the Boys and Girls Club, so thank you both.
Great, mhm. My last question, actually, Jen, is correlated with something you just said, which is kind of the correlation between GPA and, and college preparedness. Um, it, it strikes me, like, the, the, the result in here that's so incredible is matriculation to college, right? Like, going to college is kind of shocking, the, the impact that, that Avid has on kids. Um, and the academic piece is a lot weaker, right? I mean, the, the, the results in high school are sort of mixed at best, right? Um, and with little kind of statistically significant impact on GPA, AP honors, et cetera, outside of like low income in particular. And the results in college, kind of, it seems like things kind of revert back to the mean or something, I don't know what the right word is. But, but no impact that's statistically significant on, um, college persistence or, um, attendance within six semesters. And those two things seem correlated to me of, you know, is, is the, um, is our weaker results on academics also producing weaker results on the, um, kind of college persistence? Notwithstanding, I mean, the, the, the resources you guys are investing in, that is, is spectacular, to be honest, um, and, and very thoughtful. And there's still a long ways to go. And so, maybe just to go first, full circle to my first question, like, it seems to me we kind of have a choice on, do we wanna try to push harder on, on the, the before and the after, outside of the singular choice of like, I'm gonna go to college, right? Which is, it again, like, kind of shocking, the impact that we're having, um, or that you guys are having. Um, or do you would just say, great, we're gonna go all, all in on that choice, we're gonna pull some of the cost out of that and, and get more kids to that choice, right? Could we pull some of the cost out of tutoring and get more kids to that, going to the college choice? And, I don't know, it's, it seems like a strategic choice, and what is Avid, what do we really want from Avid? Do we wanna get kids to college? Or is it the full system, and that has a direct impact on how many kids we could touch? And those two things are co- in counterbalance, so it's, I don't have the answer for it, I wanted to pose the question for you guys, you're a lot closer. It just, there's, there is a really impressive impact on one moment here. And, um, I don't know, can we do more, could we do more with that, so?
I have a lot of thoughts on that, but.
Mary, I'm gonna pass it over to you. Yeah. Okay, um, well, I just wanna make sure that we're set for the board vote, um, this, um, this month. So, we have heard with regards to retention rates, are there any other pieces of information or questions that people have that they need prior to the board meeting? Um, just reminder to, to new board members, is the board, we try to get all the, the issues identified ahead of time. It's not a great place, the night of the board meeting, to be asking for data that, um, hasn't been, um, done ahead of time. So, um, that would be.
Demographics, cost, we have a very long list of questions to answer.
But, Ahmad, your hand was raised.
Yes, um, I had a question. What defines, um, like in the interim board talks about metrics on partial, students who are, have partial exposure to Avid? What defines that?
Uh, students that had less than four years, uh, in the elective class in high school. So, they maybe entered in after their freshman year, or they left the program before their senior year.
Um, and I guess, what are your takeaways on that data? Um, again, there's like the giant impact on matriculation to college. Um, it was less southern students had full-time, who had full-time exposure. Um, but there wasn't really any difference in academic performance, um, based on this. So I guess, where do you see that going, or where, I guess, what are your takeaways from that?
Just briefly, I mean, the, the academic differences are modest. But, uh, the way that the Avid, uh, conceptualizes the work and the theory behind what Avid is doing is that they're changing the interactions those students are having with their high school experience. So they're, they, those students, even though they're not jumping up in GPA, they're taking harder classes, they're taking a course of classes that they generally would not be taking without that support. Um, and then we're changing their trajectory and their belief about what they can do. Um, and at that same time, we're trying to equip them with the skills, confidence, and support to be able to take those next steps. And so, um, we would expect that students', um, behaviors in terms of course-taking and in terms of their next step after high school, um, their attainment goals would jump. Their achievement goals, that is a, that's a much more, um, complicated mix of factors. But we know that, that students, um, we're addressing those as well, and we see modest gains, um, with the support of the tutoring and a variety of other supports, that students are also increasing, though not to the same degree as their attainment goals. They're increasing their achievement as well.
Um, and just one final question. Um, most of those students who have the partial exposure, are they leaving the program after like ninth to tenth grade? Or are they joining closer to the end?
Most of them, um, left before their senior year. Um, we did a number on that, I think it was, it was about two-thirds, but then there's about a third that come in and stay until senior year.
Um, Mary, can I say a couple of final things?
Yeah, absolutely.
And just, I wanna get clear on next steps for the team. Thanks, everybody. Um, this really is a model partnership, I've gotta say, uh, and I, I wanna thank the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I, just a general statement, Avid TOPs will never have the kind of, uh, maybe amplified or exponential impact that it could have if the core instructional design of our high schools doesn't dramatically change, right? It, it, it's, it doesn't, in and of itself, um, it's not positioned to change the quality of core instruction, right? It's a system built around it. Um, so I think this essential question about pathways as an example of an instructional model, um, that has the potential to make sure that every student has access to rigorous and challenging instruction, right? That's, uh, that, that's another big conversation for another day. Um, but it, it seems to have been swirling around in today's discussion. Um, I wanna remind the board that with these MOAs, uh, the partnerships director, Astra, who you've met before, many of you have met, um, works with, uh, MMSD and our key partner, in this case, the Boys and Girls Club, to look at the evaluation, rewrite the MOA, which takes a lot of time and commitment and detail orientation. They have produced for you that revised MOA, and between now and May twentieth, their job together is to make any additional adjustments to the MOA so that you guys feel. so that you guys feel comfortable and ready to vote on it. Um, we'll produce the answers to all those questions, but the most important work this team has to do is to decide on what else they need to change about the MOA itself to satisfy some of the concerns that came up tonight. If for some reason, um, there are too many, like, the, the board can't, or shouldn't, change an MOA without the agreement of our partner, right? Which is, in this case, is the Boys and Girls Club. So, just know, like, if we come to May twentieth and not everyone is feeling comfortable with the MOA, um, that you can't just make an amendment to it, you shouldn't, and vote on it, we need to hand it back to the partner so that the team can work on it together. I just wanted a, just kind of a process check for everybody. Um, anything you guys would add process-wise? Are we good to go? Yeah?
No, I think most of what we heard is additional data to produce, more so than changes. So, I, and we have that, so we'll make sure everyone gets that, but that's kind of where I heard the biggest things was, uh, details.
Yeah, data, yeah, but we'll try to process whether or not there are other implications.
Jenny, yeah, you bring up a really good point, so I think, um, no one did bring that up, but it's, it's worth just asking right now, because we would like to surface this prior to the board meeting. Are there specifics around the MOA?
Yeah, the ex, for me, the explicit, um, when we were talking about, um, YELLS, I mentioned students and students with IPs.
Okay.
Same.
All right.
I mean, I think that's under what section two, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I think somewhere in there.
I'd like something on recruitment of those groups, would be helpful.
Okay.
I, I would love to see the budget and funding stuff for you guys, but I, I, she can get it and I can't, so I think it's certainly my computer issue right now, so.
All right.
Computers are evil.
Okay, and yeah, if there are other things that are specific to the MOA itself, please let us know. Um, but right now, we think we're mostly giving you more information so you understand how Avid works. Um, uh, and remember, I mean, the MOA, we're constantly working with our partners to learn and apply what we've learned over time, right? And this is just, this is what the partnership is about. Um, they meet very regularly, always, uh, making the program stronger together. So, thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. First up with the new board, and they survived, I think we should give them a round of applause. Good job, guys. Okay, so, um, that was really our only agenda item, um, for this evening, so, um, I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Ananda, either.
Oh, Ahmad, your vote is your vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, and so, we'll just take a very short break, five minutes, um, before-